Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to ask you to please all come to order. We are about to start the Board of Education meeting tonight. I would like to point out the exits which are behind us and behind our audience as well. And I would ask you all to please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are up to our first item of business, and that's recognition of visitors. Recognition of visitors for any items on the agenda or for any other concerns. And if you are giving a comment, we ask you to please step up to the microphone, which is at the end of the table, and please state your name. And we would ask you to please limit your remarks to three minutes.
Jane McDonald. I've worked in the district for almost 30 years. Thank you for your time. I will make this brief. There's little need to revisit the litany of havoc COVID created across communities in our profession as educators. As teachers, we were asked to navigate these times of uncertainty, and we did. We, as teachers, were the front line, the primary personal connection to frantic families, traumatized students. It was incumbent upon us, whether the pandemic came in our 30th or third year on the job, to be strong and supportive emotionally while maintaining the standards and routines of our classrooms. Times of crisis certainly lead to periods of introspection and reevaluation of one's core beliefs. In talking to colleagues and community members, common themes presented. This year's SEL, or social emotional learning themes, which are being implemented in the classroom, are our common thread. Our core values are what delivered us from the chaos of COVID and provided stability in our classrooms. I stand here today not shocked that we lived through this great pandemic, but stunned by the callous, ongoing disregard shown to us by the central administration. We exhibit kindness every day to our students and colleagues. It should not be too much to ask that central administration return the core values of gratitude, empathy, and leadership to the staff. I'm troubled and disappointed by the lack of care, respect, and common civility we have been shown. We should be protecting and rallying around our school community. I ask the support and administration, how? Was it not worth mentioning the passing of a colleague at the superintendent conference day opening? How? Is there no recognition of retirees' longevity of service? And how is it that we cannot be empathetically flexible to those who have lost loved ones during this cruel time? It is this callous behavior that is far more insidious than COVID itself. We have collectively lost much during this ordeal, yet many of us have gained a deeper understanding of exactly what our values are.
Jane, I'd ask you to please wrap it up.
No, I remain steadfast in my commitment in connecting and cultivating relationships, working to gain new perspectives, showing gratitude when appropriate, and empathy when needed. This should be a conversation of reinforcement in our school, not one of rebuke to the administrators tasked with shepherding us through these difficult times.
Thank you, Jane.
School matters. I speak not to be divisive, but to provide perspective in hopes that this aids in producing a starting point for the much-needed overhaul of the district administration's relationship with us, the staff, the foundation of our school. After all, what impacts teachers and staff on a daily basis directly impacts our students in our community.
Hello? Okay, there we go. My name is Joelle Aguilar. I'm a kindergarten teacher here at CES. I am a proud Cornwall alumna, and I have been a resident of Cornwall for over 50 years. I'd like to begin by reminding the board and the community about a few exceptional statistics regarding our school district. Number one, CCHS is a national blue ribbon school winner. Two, we have award-winning sports, music, and arts. Three, we are number one in many standardized assessments. We are number one in Orange County for a reason, and the major part of that reason is our dedicated teachers. Teachers who have shifted gears at a moment's notice due to unforeseen obstacles like COVID, like lack of student technology, like dropped Wi-Fi connections, like complications of live streaming. Teachers who continue to pay out of their own pocket for supplies. Teachers who have worked a second job in order to make ends meet. Teachers who are always proud to say they teach in Cornwall when people ask. Teachers who participate in continuing education to further their own knowledge base. Teachers who continually give up weekend time and family time to work on or attend school-related activities when they don't really need to. Most importantly, teachers who are paid over $18,000 less in median average salary than our neighboring Monter Woodbury colleagues, and that is according to See Through New York. Teachers who have proven our worthiness to the board and the community time and time again. We say, now it's your turn to prove to us how much you value our dedication to the students and the parents of this community. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to committee reports. Oh, I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
Turn this on, is it on?
It's on.
I was here last meeting.
Your name, please.
Mark Kowalski, Cornwall resident. Kids went here for 25 years, three kids. And I was here last time, and I was told by you not to disturb your school board meeting. You got that a little bit wrong. It's our school board meeting, okay? We pay the taxes, we pay the salaries.
This school board is not paid. Just want to clarify that.
It's our school board meeting, okay? Second of all, I spoke to the superintendent, asking him nicely, and he walked away from me, on how does he justify a 3% raise after six months of employment here? Coming here...
Excuse me?
4%, thank you. Correction, sorry. 4%, knowing when you came here what your salary would be. And you get a 4% where you sign off with another administrator, and you each get around that percentage. How do you justify that when these people don't have a raise in 159 days? It's not right. These are the ones teaching our kids, hopefully math, history, science, geography, the basic stuff that we need our kids to learn. So if you could justify that raise to me, no problem. But I don't think you can. And I don't think when you're on Zoom for X amount of days, especially in the beginning of the pandemic, and you get that, how does that happen? I was a civil servant for years. The best raise I got was eight and eight back in 1981. And then we got zeros. So how do you get that? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I appreciate having the opportunity to share my concerns with you.
Your name, please.
Linda Line, teacher at Willow Avenue Elementary School for about 18, 19 years. I must begin by telling you that I have been a teacher there for about 18 years or so. And during this time, I have worked under the leadership of about, well, two other superintendents prior to Mr. Dade. This, however, is the first time that I have felt disrespected and unappreciated. Many years ago, Tim Ream admitted during a superintendent's conference day that he had seen a young woman in a convenience store. She greeted him, and he responded by asking if she was a student in Cornwall. She politely told him that she was one of his teachers. After recovering from this embarrassment and apologizing, he decided he was going to make every effort to get to know his teachers. I wasn't here very long, and every time he greeted me, he greeted me by name. I met, not formally, Mr. Dade in my building. It was the first week of school. I was walking down the main stairwell, and he was walking up. I smiled. I think I got half a smile. I said hello. He didn't respond, and I was happy. I was going to introduce myself. He did not give me the opportunity to do so. He continued walking very fast by me. That, just Mr. Ream knowing my name, meant a great deal to me. It just made me feel like I mattered somehow. Now, I think that we have forgotten that Cornwall is the number one district because of its teachers. Maybe we haven't forgotten, maybe we just don't recognize it. It was earlier in the year when I had asked for a very inexpensive Plexiglas so it would protect me, my students, my family, their families, so I can administer the FNP assessments. I was asked to prove that I had a disability in order for me to be entitled to having one. When I could not prove that because I never claimed to having a disability, I was told that the school, or the district, was not required to provide one. And I must tell you that that was greatly disappointing because I have never, never, in all the years at Cornwall, met requirements. I have always gone above and beyond, as my colleagues do. The only explanation that I was provided was that you just didn't have to do it. And the denial note that I got from Mr. Zieg was, your request is denied. That's it. That was the closing sentence that I received. Now, my colleague, Eleonora Pansoneiro, had already spoken to our PTO president, and they had offered to pay for the Plexiglas divider so we would be protected. Mr. Dade denied that and said that if we wanted one, that we had to go through him and that he would evaluate each one on its own merits.
Linda, can you wrap it up, please?
Yes, as soon as I'm done. And he continued to praise Mr. Walter Moran for having done such a great job at purchasing all of these things, and they were in the warehouse instead of being...
Linda, I would ask you to please respect the three-minute time limit.
And they were in the warehouse instead of being given to us to use in the classrooms. To me, that is a waste of funds, and I'm sure parents would not appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
I wonder if parents would know, if I had shared with my parents that it had been denied, that if they had requested as a tax-paying citizen, would you have denied it as well? Okay? I do feel that there is a huge lack of respect and consideration, okay? And for you, we are going 159 days without a contract. In the meantime, you guys received a $3,000 bonus for a COVID year, for being a difficult year. What did we teachers get? A lack of respect, a lack of consideration.
I would ask you to please respect the three-minute time limit as well, because now you're up to four minutes.
And I am also going to tell you that one of the many things that my children lack this year is life skills, social skills.
Thank you very much, and we're going to move on to our next order of business. We're done. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Well, there's another chance for speaking at the end. Linda, you are done. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to committee reports now, please. We are done with comments until the next session at the end of the meeting, please. Thank you very much. I have a motion to adjourn the meeting. So move. Second.
Nancy, I would ask you to put that motion to a vote, please.
Certainly, all in favor. Aye. Show of hands. You want to say?
Yes.
I would ask you all to respect the process of this meeting. You want respect, we would ask you to respect the process. Could excuse me for a second, okay? There was a motion on the floor. I would like to see a show of hands. We had a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor of adjourning?
I'm in favor of adjourning if we don't stick to the three minutes. I'm happy to hear everybody speak, but we have to stick... No, no, no. But we have to stick to the three minutes because it goes both ways, right? So you have three minutes. You say what you got to say in three minutes.
But I would ask that... No, we can't try our best. I'm going to ask you to stick to the three minutes. I would ask you to stick to the three minutes. You're going to need the microphone, please. You're going to need the microphone because then it gets taped. If you don't use the microphone, it's not streaming.
Thank you very much. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Serena Bizgayer, and I have been teaching in this district for 18 years. As some of you may know, I lost my son Nicholas on June 25, 2021. He was 26 years old and was a graduate of Cornwall Central High School. I would hope, I would hope you can imagine how painful and unbearable this loss has been for me. I struggled to get through each day, and it has been a challenge enduring the pain and grief that no parent should ever have to experience. With that said, what allowed me some peace to return to some form of normalcy was the love and support of my colleagues, friends, and family. After speaking with Mr. Dade in person at the end of August to discuss ways I could share my story with the community, high school students, and parents, to hopefully save future lives of students who are struggling with drug addiction, I thought I also had the support and backing of central administration. However, I sadly learned that proved to be false because my son died out of state during a global pandemic. Making arrangements to pick up his ashes, waiting for toxicology reports to learn the cause of death, as well as death certificates, became a nightmarish chore. Compounded with the grief, anxiety, and the acceptance of this tragedy, seeing to some of the arrangements needed to be postponed. My family also lives out of state, and travel for some was impossible at that time. When fall approached, my family came to town and helped me finalize some of these arrangements. As hard as this was, I reached out to central administration to request my bereavement days be taken separately due to the nature of the circumstances and to allow myself and my family to say the proper goodbye. I was then told that I would be approved to take only two bereavement days and that I would have to use personal days after that if I wished to spread out my bereavement days. With that knowledge, I took all five of my bereavement days consecutively, making sure to adhere to contract language, which clearly states I was entitled to five days for the loss of a child. Again, let me reiterate that this was a loss of my firstborn son, not a distant relative. Without getting into the specifics of it all, I was approved for my five bereavement days by my principal. However, I was denied three of the bereavement days by central administration. In addition, I was not made aware that my three personal days were taken away from me until I looked closely at a recent pay stub and noticed there were no personal days listed. I'm sure you can imagine the shock, sadness, and disturbing lack of respect that I was feeling at that time. I'm not sure what type of person would show such lack of compassion and disdain for their employee who was suffering this type of unexpected tragedy.
Serena, I'd ask you to please wrap it up.
I was not asking for anything I was not entitled to, nor was I in any way taking advantage of my personal days or my sick days. I have been a dedicated employee of this district for 18 years, and I have never experienced such disrespect from my employer until now, nor have I ever been treated so poorly by any former employer. I am appalled that I must stand here in front of you all, sharing this very personal tragedy, only five months removed from this fragile incentive time of my life. As difficult as this is to stand before you this evening, it is important for you to hear the facts and to understand what has transpired. I know there is nothing that you can do to ease my pain, nor did I ever think I would have to endure this additional stress and anxiety regarding the loss of my son. But yet here I stand with a heavy heart, sharing my angst, because it needs to be heard. My story is just one of so many that we are experiencing as teachers of the Cornwall Central School District. My wish is that things change for us and change quickly. I do hope that I am the only employee that will ever have to stand before you to advocate for themselves during such a traumatic time. Please take a special moment tonight to give your children an extra hug, because as I have learned, tomorrow is not promised. And I sincerely hope that you never have to experience this pain in your life ever.
Okay, I'm going to move on to committee reports now. Oh, certainly, then, please come up. I didn't realize that. Absolutely. Go right ahead. And then we're going to move on to committee reports after this, okay? Thank you. Your name, please.
Hi, my name is Jaden Lott, senior captain of the varsity football team. I'm here tonight to prove to you just how important these teachers are to the Cornwall students. As a student who has received so much from our teachers over my past 12 years in the district, I feel it's important to speak out how special they are to not just myself, but to everyone in the Cornwall community. My mom asked me a question today, and that question was, do you have a teacher that has been influential to you over your time at Cornwall? My mind went back over the past 12 years here, and my response was, I can't narrow it down to just one. The teachers at every level of my life have impacted me in a different way. Ms. Bergielli, Ms. Berg, Ms. Scala, Ms. Hogan, Ms. E., Ms. Fern, and many more were there for me emotionally in elementary school for a kid who didn't want to leave his mom. Then you have Ms. Brussler, Mr. Hines, Ms. Inosenzio, Ms. Abels, and many more who have supported my academic development. And finally, there is Mr. Castle, Mr. Holzapple, Mr. Ward, Mr. Ballack, and Mr. Fanning, who have influenced my athletic success. I even had two teachers this year who presented me with an early graduation gift because of how much they care about their students. These teachers here are special. They are not just amazing educators, they are also our mentors. They are there for us when we need them most. I feel I wouldn't be the person I am today without them in my life. I can confidently say many other students would agree with me. These teachers in the Cornwall Central School District are the best around and deserve so much more. Thank you for your time, and I hope my words have helped these teachers as much as they have me over the years.
Working? Yeah? Hi, I'm Dawn Lynch, but I'm reading on behalf of Kara Martinisi, who needed to step out. My name is Kara Martinisi. My husband and I are alumni of this district, and we have two living children who attend Willow Avenue and the middle school. Some of you may know Kara's oldest son, Christian, who died just days before starting first grade at Willow Avenue. This is a parent's worst nightmare and one that I hope many of you cannot relate to. It's the most undesirable club to belong to. Tonight, I am here in full support of the staff, receiving a fair contract. In addition, I'm speaking in support of a fellow grieving mother who teaches in the district. It has been over seven years since my son passed away. There are still days that I have difficulty focusing and recalling what I want to say or what I was doing. This is after many hours of intensive trauma therapy. I bring this to your attention because the teacher I'm referring to lost her son less than six months ago. At the six-month mark, I was in the throes of depression. Some days, I was unable to get out of bed, days often consisted of multiple bouts of tears, places I could not visit because it was too painful, and feelings of hopelessness. I needed to help with my living children. Although children are a beacon of hope in many ways, they also need a lot. And when we are grieving, it can be nearly impossible to provide them with what they need. I was seeing a therapist weekly and had lots of help, but this is the nature of child loss. I remember very distinctly at the time of my journey, dropping off one of my younger sons at preschool. In the parking lot, a father whom I knew asked me how I was doing. I proceeded to burst into tears and fall apart, sniffling and losing myself in grief. He was dumbfounded, and I felt horrible. I share these anecdotes with you so you see the truth in child loss. I am disheartened and frankly shocked that the teacher I am speaking of was denied three of her five grieving days. She lost her child. I will say again that this is one of the most traumatic experiences one can go through. Child loss is a situation that begs compassion and empathy. Unless you have lived through it, you truly have no perspective of what it is like. Ironically, this month's social and emotional theme in the district, empathy and perspective. My hope is that the grieving mother I speak of has afforded the same grace Cornwall strives to teach their students. That's on behalf of my friend Kara Martinisi.
Thank you, Dawn.
Good evening. My name is Eleonora Pansoneiro. I have been a teacher for well over half my life. When you choose to go into education, you do so because you have a passion and desire to make a difference in the lives of your students. Our students become our children, who we love, protect, educate, and nurture as if they are our own. Here in the Cornwall schools, I have had the pleasure of working with some of the best, teachers that go above and beyond to ensure that each child is receiving the best education possible. Throughout the pandemic, I watched as these dedicated professionals, sitting behind me, found creative ways to reach the children who at times weren't even sitting in front of them. This amazing group of educators are the reason we rank year after year at the top of our county. They are the reason why our graduation rate is so high. It is because of them that Willow Avenue ranked among the top 50 elementary schools in the state. They are why we have a blue ribbon school and state testing scores that rank among the best in New York. The housing market is quite profitable here in Cornwall because people want to buy a home in our school district. They want their children educated by us. All of this is because of the sea of red you see before you. The November SEL buzzword was gratitude. It seems that perhaps you have all forgotten the meaning of the word. It means the quality or feeling of being grateful or thankful. You see, actions speak louder than words. On the rare occasion that we receive a three-sentence email... On the rare occasion that we receive a three-sentence email telling us how grateful you are for the teachers and staff, we see it as a lot of lip service. Actions speak louder than words. And the actions, or should I say inactions, of all of you speaks volumes. The Board of Education came to each of the buildings to speak with the teachers, nurses, and staff. We were very forthcoming with our concerns with what is actually happening in each building. People cried, used strong words, invented about the last two years and what our issues and concerns are. You feverishly took notes and assured us you would get to the bottom of all of it. Again, lip service. Actions do speak louder than words. Absolutely nothing came from those visits. They may as well have not occurred. The December SEL buzzword is empathy. Again, perhaps you forgot the meaning. The psychological identification with or vicarious experiencing of the feelings, thoughts, or attitudes of another. Did you show empathy for Serena? Were you vicariously experiencing her feelings when her bereavement days were denied? I have a file full of unempathetic emails sent from district office to staff. When the district chose Thanksgiving Day to open elementary school report cards, were you identifying with our feelings or thoughts for the need to spend time with our families? Once again, lip service. Actions speak much louder than words. Sitting behind me, right here, before your very eyes, are the heart and soul of this district. Perhaps in your next closed-door meeting, you should have a conversation about just how to show your gratitude and empathy to the backbone of this district, because we are CCTA Strong.
Okay, we're going to go on to committee reports now. Margaret, do you have anything to share?
I wasn't able to attend the Orange County School Boards Association meeting on Wednesday, but they are sending the information, so I'll send the link. There was an interesting presentation given by an institution that's run through Brown University, so I will make sure that I send that link to everybody, so you can take a look at it. And we are currently working on setting up dates for our next round of visitations. That would be the Visitation Committee.
Thank you. Teresa?
We're discussing the remaining policies tonight for approval. This is the second reading. And we'll also be discussing, I think it's 3010, which is about board and how we evaluate. So that's going to be happening tonight, and then after that, we'll see about our next meeting.
Thank you, John. Any updates?
Nothing to report, Nancy. Excellent.
Louis?
No.
Larry?
Facilities Committee met on November 23rd. We went over the timelines, milestones, and supporting documents of those milestones. We discussed a middle school bus loop that would be behind the middle school, that would be for buses only, to help relieve the congestion in front of the middle school. There was a general update from our architects, and we started going over the schools line by line on our five-year building condition survey. There's a full minutes are posted, and the meetings are live and recorded, if anybody wants more specifics.
The Communication Committee had its first Capital Project Community Forum on November 10th, and we followed it up with, well, a word on that. We think most people here were either there or caught up on it, and it was, I would say, a lively discussion. The athletic fields occupied a lot of the discussion. I would say it was probably about 50-50 split between high school and middle school. We have scheduled our next forum for next Thursday. That's December 16, 7:00 p.m. It's going to be the same format, brief presentation followed by this community-led discussion, probably at the middle school, although we will confirm that location by tomorrow. And so you'll look forward to Communication going out about that. We've also, we're bringing on a PR professional by the name of Holly Booker, who is going to help us do a lot of the things that the Communication Committee has talked about in the last couple of weeks and months with regards to postcards, signage, particularly in the push as we enter the spring. And so that's good. That's a lot of the things that we had planned, that we now have the help to do. And we've also been conducting smaller community engagement meetings, small groups, meeting with committee members, getting their feedback, including, we had a couple scheduled, we had one with the Chamber of Commerce. And it was, again, these are all just very, produced a lot of insight. I think when we get to the board-level discussion of all the different projects, I think that'll be the time to bring all that together and present kind of as a Communication Committee package to all the things that we've learned over the last few weeks.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead, Teresa.
Actually, it's a question that actually relates to both. Tonight, I see we're doing, it's in here regarding the middle school, as best as remediation of the flooring. On the list of things that are being all considered for this project, I know the list is that vast, there are other buildings also have asbestos floors. I won't say it's, I was in Willow Avenue, and the auditorium there is in pretty bad shape, as far as there's the flooring and things like that, and as far as the seats, the old wood seats. Now, I know that there, again, we have a long list of things that we're considering, and there's certainly going to be, we don't have an endless amount of money, but I was wondering, are those things that are in that list of items? Because again, this reminded me of the fact that that flooring.
Go ahead. We are considering things in every building. And then we're also taking a look at the highest priorities, such as water infiltration, which leads to mold. So we are looking at all of those. I can honestly say we have not talked about replacing the wooden seats in Willow.
No, and honestly, that probably does a lot of damage to people's pants and poles and stockings, but I was more concerned about things like the flooring, the asbestos. And also, I was wondering about the air circulation.
I'm sorry, I lost that last piece.
I'm sorry. The air circulation in that room, there's no windows in there or anything, and that was something that struck me, too. Look, the buildings need work, all of them, and I'm not here to tell you which to do, but that made me think about it, because I did notice that there were cracked tiles in there.
Well, we will bring it up at the meeting.
If you, that's great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next on to the consent agenda. This is the consent agenda permits the board to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion. Is there any member of the board that wishes to pull out an item? We have items two through six. Okay, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda as submitted by the Superintendent of Schools, items two through six. Do I have a motion?
No.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, new business non-consent agenda discussion of Board Ed Policy number 0310, Board Self-Evaluation. And I'm going to turn it over to Louis.
Okay. Thank you, Nancy. Yeah, at last meeting, 0310 was presented for approval and then pulled back because of a specific sentence at the bottom of the policy where it said, "The board shall use a self-evaluation instrument." Teresa had that concern, as well as Nina, piggybacked on that with that same idea. Brendan noted that when we did sort out SUPEReval and vetted out SUPEReval, that there were other modules that can be supported in that. And so, enter me with SUPEReval, I contacted the gentleman who facilitated that for us, and Mike, yeah, Mike. And in essence, it's the New York State School Board Association review that I sent everybody. It's that review in electronic form. So it's that module, or it's that turned into a module. It streamlines everything, it's online, you can, it's almost a mirror image, you said. So I believe I sent a video to everybody, or I didn't forward the video? I will, I can do that. But it's basically the NISBA review electronically. So any supporting documents that we have can be uploaded, akin to as Terry did. There's a one-time, not one-time, there's a yearly added cost, $600 a year. It seemed very reasonable to me, should we choose, you know, it's yearly, and that's really what's out there.
Louis, maybe you can resend or send more information to the board, and then we can have this as a resolution for the next meeting?
I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask one question about the SUPEReval, which was great when we, you know, is the superintendent's evaluation? It takes the NISBA things for the board, right, the board goals? Can we add our own goals, too? Like if we have our local goals, can we add stuff to it, or is it customizable a little bit?
No, akin to Terry's, I believe it's customizable.
Okay.
So it's just a baseline, it's again, what NISBA requests of boards, or requests of them, what NISBA.
All the stuff in the new member handbook, what a board does.
Yeah, what they suggest that you should do for your evaluation tool. It normalizes everything, so I suppose we could, I can certainly follow it up as one of my questions.
Okay, yeah, because I'd like to add our, you know, our annual goals, too, to make sure that we're meeting those as well. Thank you.
Okay, next item is Middle School SECRE resolution. I would like to take that as per document and now therefore be resolved that the board finds and concludes that the proposed action is a Type II action within the meaning of six NYCRR 617.5, and therefore is not subject to review under SECRE and the regulations they're under, resolve that a copy of the resolution shall be sent to any involved or interested agencies. Do I have a motion?
No move.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Okay, that's fine, thank you. Okay, Middle School Tile Project Resolution, whereas the voters of the Cornwall School District approved a budget for the 2021-22 school year, and within it, a proposed capital project titled Middle School Library and Auxiliary Gym Flooring, for an expense not to exceed $131,875, as a transfer to capital budget line. And whereas the Board of Education wishes to proceed with the project, it is hereby resolved that the recommendation of the superintendent, the district is hereby authorized to proceed with the above project and to work with the district's architect, council, and other entities to take the appropriate steps to commence and complete the project. Do I have a motion? So moved. And a second? Any discussion?
One question, was this under consideration for the bond? No, okay, so it doesn't benefit that. Okay.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, we're up to our second time for visitors to speak. If anyone wishes to speak, I'd ask you to come to the microphone, state your name, and please stick to the three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Wright, and I am the president of the Cornwall Central Teachers Association. Tonight, I address the Board of Education. I am thinking about our Cornwall community. There are many different individuals and groups that make up our school community, administrators, teachers, and staff members, students and their parents. Being part of the school community gives a sense of belonging. I'm shaking. I normally don't shake. It's about the collaborative uniqueness of each individual and the celebration of who we are collectively. Each of our different roles fit together, and this sense of belonging is absolutely important to who we are. What happens to people when there is a break in the feeling of community? People no longer feel safe, and teachers and staff did not feel safe last year. Our pleas for what we thought were basic requests were not supported and denied repeatedly. You denied requests for upgraded PPE. You denied requests for plastic dividers for reading level tests. You ignored the distancing mandate of how many students can be in a classroom, especially in the high school. You put off dealing with the mold problems in schools and the disrepairs of our building. You did not follow the state mandate, or I'm sorry, you are not following the state mandate to allow your staff to be involved in weekly COVID testing if they choose. You keep out of the conversation, you kept us out of the conversations last year when it came to the being the best opening plan for our schools. And again, you kept us out of the conversation when developing the plan on how to use the federal funding Cornwall received in the spring. Yes, you did survey the teachers, but a survey should lead to a dialogue. We used to be collaborative. We used to be a collaborative district, where teachers' input had value. Each and every one of us had a unique role to play in the school community, and if we don't play it, every one of us suffers. Harvey, you've done a great job in keeping us fiscally healthy and saving close to $3 million a year, but when we received $5.1 million for COVID recovery efforts, you, the Board of Education, again chose to shut us out of the conversation and not give us a voice. A record number of staff came to relay to the Visitation Committee their concerns when they visited our schools, because morale is at an all-time low. We need collaboration and action to fix this. This means meaningful action, like funding our AC to elevate the oppressive heat in the classrooms, and not just funding Cornwall Pride banners that line our driveways. We teachers fully understand that you are the decision-makers. However, it seems you have an agenda and you want to push it through, and what matters to you does not always take into account how it affects the people who are working in the five schools in the district. We know our worth, and we know the worth of the staff we work with. We are number one in the county because of what everyone in this school community contributes. We do not feel supported by you and would like students and staff to be top on your agenda. We would truly like collaboration to be reinstated and to feel that sense of Cornwall school community again. Actions speak louder than words. We're looking forward to yours.
Lisa Van Lege, for those that don't know me, I graduated from here. I have two daughters who graduated from here. I've lived here my entire life. I know some of you very well. It's not often that I come out anymore. Mr. Dade, we have not met, but I have substitute taught in this district on and off for 30 years. I'm currently a nurse in, let's just say, a large medical facility in Westchester County, so we'll put it that way. I was on the front line, I am on the front line, and as much as you didn't understand what I did on the front line and what I saw, I have to turn and say to these people in this room, I don't understand how they have done what they have done on this front line. And just as I fight down at that medical center, for my nurses down there, I do serve on the Board of the Union down there, and I am fighting very hard, because likewise, our administrators have taken bonuses and raises, and it's all over the news that the nurses are not respected. And likewise, in this district, as I substitute as a nurse in this district as well, these nurses in this district are not being supported either. So as I come out tonight, as I am leaving tomorrow morning on a flight, I will tell you that these teachers in this room have done an amazing job, because my girls have both attended top universities, and this Friday night, the youngest one will graduate with honors with a job offer on the table tonight. And I respect these. And I respect these teachers for what they did. It wasn't what I did, it was what all of them did collectively for my girls. So I beg of you tonight that if you saw that money in that budget, to be able to give yourself something that you turn around and give this front line what they deserve. Thank you.
My name is Mary Kelly Myers. I'm a lifelong community member and a graduate of Cornwall. This is not the Cornwall I know. The Cornwall I know values their teachers. The Cornwall I know takes care of their staff, students, and community. This is not the Cornwall I left my job in Middletown to come back home to. I'm going to give my perspective as one teacher in a pool of incredible teachers in the Cornwall Central School District. In the 2020-21 school year, I was fortunate to work from home as I was pregnant, and I also have recurring pneumonia. During that time, the technology I used, I completely figured out on my own, and I streamed to 24 different classes with ongoing technology issues. My colleagues at COH in Willow continuously worked with me to creatively fix these issues, even down to FaceTiming with our own phones, if that's what it took for me to reach my Since September 1st of this year, I have livestreamed to over 29 different students, one of them being full-time. This is all while teaching with about 25 or more students in front of me as well. And we are all dealing with this. I've had several direct exposures this year. The first time, I was so upset with the delivery of the message because it was new to me as I was home the year before. I sobbed afterwards in front of a class of fifth graders because I was that scared. While dealing with a current medical issue, which I'll be starting daily IV treatments for, not once did I hear, "We hope you feel better," or "How are you doing? Can we help you?" Instead, I felt more of an inconvenience. I don't feel important or supported right now, most particularly mentally and emotionally. And like Brenda said, actions speak louder than words. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tara Burachelli. I've been teaching in Cornwall since 2001. When Eleanor Pandanaro talked about a folder of letters, one of them is mine. I'm immunocompromised. In about October, November last year, I was assessing a child very close to me, and somebody saw and said, "You need a divider." I went to my doctor, which I didn't like going out in public, the only place I went was my classroom, went to my doctor, he wrote a note on his prescription pad, and it said that he treated me and that I was immunocompromised and needed Plexiglas. I submitted my letter, the note, and I was told no. I was told I needed to go back to my doctor to have a specific diagnosis. I sat and I cried, and then I went to the union, and they said, "You do not have to give out your private medical information." So I emailed that I would not be doing that, and I would look forward to his response. I received a response 24 hours later that said, "He looked into it, and immunocompromised was accepted." I was not the first person who submitted documentation with the words immunocompromised. I was not the first, and I don't know why I was told no, and I don't know why it wasn't looked into prior to telling me no. There's just a lot of these stories, and I think we can do better. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Dimitro, and I'm the President of the PTO at Willow this year. And I had no intention of speaking this evening, so I apologize that I don't have anything formally prepared. But after what I experienced this evening, I just felt compelled to say something, and I simply want to say thank you. We appreciate you, our children appreciate you. And it's become, thank you for teaching our children to be respectful, when it's become abundantly clear to me tonight that respect is not something you're receiving in return.
Hi, my name is Ashley McEwen. I'm a proud member of the Willow community, as a parent and one of the VPs of the PTO. My children are recently in quarantine, and I cannot explain to you the support and help their teachers provided. They dropped off work to our porch, and when necessary to change a math lesson, they came right to my backyard and dropped off the work during her off time. Over the past two years, the PTO has been called upon to help with both the reopening of the schools by purchasing lunch trays and mats at the 11th hour at a cost of $4,000, which we had earmarked for Chromebooks. We have been also asked to purchase air conditioners for our childrens to ensure that the ventilation and air quality of the classrooms is safe for all of the students. As a teacher in a neighboring district, I know that the COVID money was set up to be earmarked to address ventilation concerns. Why do kindergarten classrooms have mold in them? Why does the gym have mold in them? On the equipment, there's mold. These kids are going to school, and we know that the teachers here support them and love them, and we want to know where that support and love is for our teachers. Thank you.
Okay, as we get ready to adjourn, I would like to address some of the concerns. This is a state, I'm sorry.
Last comment.
Okay, go right ahead.
I'm Michelle Query. I'm a resident, a parent. Both my parents were teachers, my kids are current children here in the district. And this is an unprompted comment, but I just wanted to say, I have a great deal of respect for people who choose to serve in the capacity of the school board, many of you I know and have a relationship with and respect. I also have a great deal of respect for teachers, obviously. I work in a school district. As I said, my parents were teachers. But I just wanted to say, you know, it's not too late to make amends. This is a wonderful opportunity, witnessing this meeting. I hear a great deal of hurt, and I also think that the, honestly, that the bravery of people to divulge very personal details about what they've gone through only comes out of desperation, and I think it's a time for reflection on behalf of the board, just to think about how to make amends, because it certainly is not too late. I recognize there are so many competing priorities as a member of the public. There is certainly always pressure to be financially responsible, but it costs so much money to train and lose teachers over and over again. And I know that new teachers are going to come and they're going to go if they don't have fair compensation. And really, there is no better time than to make the contract right and to make it for more than one year and to show this community that we really are Cornwall strong. This is the time.
Just prior to our adjournment, I would like to provide a comment regarding the CCTA contract negotiations. The Board would like to thank everyone that has come forward to voice their concerns about the ongoing negotiations that the district has been engaged with the Cornwall Central Teachers Association since February of last school year. Please be assured that the Board shares a common goal with the CCTA, which is a fair contract for all, a contract that is equitable for our staff, one that is fiscally responsible for our taxpayers, and most importantly, a contract that will continue to address the needs of our students. As you all know, contract negotiations is a process. It involves give and take from both parties and many times creative thinking to find solutions that are mutually acceptable. In some cases, the issues put on the table by either side can be challenging for the other side to be accepting of, which results in having to have difficult conversations about the proposals that have been made. Our district team has been negotiating in good faith with CCTA since February of this year, and we remain committed to reaching an agreement that both sides are satisfied with. The teachers, although they are working under their old contract, there is a contract in place that does protect them. We have offered several increases to our wage proposal. In fact, we have come very close to equaling the wage increases proposed by the CCTA last spring, which demonstrated good-faith bargaining. However, each time to the contrary, the CCTA has since increased their wage demands twice during mediation. While we have tried to move to a middle ground, the CCTA has been increasing the wage demands and moving further away from any middle ground without justification. Despite this, the district remains committed to reaching an agreement that both sides are satisfied with. As a point of information, our CCTA contracts include percentage increase plus step increase, while the district central administration does not have step increases in their contracts. Sometimes coming to an agreement takes longer than some.
Continue, Nancy, continue.
I'm waiting. If they want to slam chairs, go slam chairs. Sometimes coming to an agreement takes longer than some would like or expect. However, the negotiation processes cannot conclude until both sides can walk away from the table feeling that their concerns have been adequately addressed. As a point of information, our CCTA contracts include percentage increases plus step increase, while the district central administration does not have step increases in their contract. Until all concerns have been adequately addressed, attempts to reach resolution continue, even if it involves bringing in a neutral third-party mediator to assist. In our current negotiations with the CCTA, this is exactly what was done, and yet no mutual resolution was reached to bring things to closure at this time. The Board very much respects the negotiations process and remains open to continuing to strive for a constructive dialogue with the CCTA to reach an agreement. We cannot emphasize this enough, that we, too, want a fair contract for all. Our next step will be going to fact-finding. Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.